Okay, so I'd like to call the Board of Select the meeting into order for Wednesday, July 15th, 2020. Before we jump into the schedule, I have just a little bit of housekeeping. Mr. Brian Dick will not be with us tonight, this evening. And what I'd like to do, I want to make a little audible here. We're going to jump right to new business number six. It's disclosure of appearance of conflict of interest for Daniel Ronan. And why we want to jump to six is the Conservation Committee, they have a meeting right now at seven with a big old list. And if we don't agree to approve the disclosure, they will not have a quorum. So what I'd like to do is jump right to business six quickly. It's the again, it's the disclosure of appearance of conflict of interest for Mr. Daniel Rowland. He is, he is appointed to the Conservation Commission. Just getting a little bit of static. He's appointed to the Conservation Commission. He filled out all the necessary paperwork, the sheet. So at this point, I'm going to open up to the board if they have any questions or concerns regarding the disclosure of appearance of conflict of interest for Mr. Daniel Ronan.
I have none.
Mr. Chairman, I have none either.
Okay, how about Mr. Kratman?
Well, with that, I'll make a, I'll make a motion to accept the disclosure of appearance of conflict of interest for Mr. Daniel Ronan.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second. And just because for the residents, because this is a virtual meeting, we have to do a roll call vote. I know folks are very curious when we do that, but we have to do that per the rules. So I'll try to keep the same bat in order for consistency. So Ms. Wellman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. So Mr. Montori, could you do us a big favor and maybe just send, send those folks a text so they can get, they have a big laundry list of items to cover? Could you send a text just stating that we approved it?
Yep. Yes, I'll do it right now, Mr. Chairman.
Perfect. Alrighty. Alright, thank you for taking care of that order of business. So why don't we jump to schedule items at seven o'clock, we have the Wamisette one day entertainment applications. So this is a public hearing, so what we'll do is we'll have a motion to open the public hearing. I'm sorry, what we'll do is we'll, we'll have Mr. Donnie speak as to what he's asking for as far as the entertainment applications. At that point, the board will entertain questions, have questions for Donnie. At that point, we'll open up to the only director, director butters only because it is a public hearing. So with that being said, do I have a motion to waive the reading of the public hearing notice?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
The second.
I have a second, I have a second. Okay, roll call vote, Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. So, Mr. McLaren, the floor is all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. So right now, we're just proposing for a DJ ladies night, our movie night, luau, and dueling pianos, some things that we have done in the past. There's a, there's a bunch of dates here, I can read them off. One happened to miss the applica- is in the application, so it's not even noticed, so it's 7/16, 7/23, 7/30, 8/13, 8/20, 8/27, and then a movie night, 7/16, which we have delayed, 8/5, 8/27, and then our luau, 8/13, and dueling pianos on 7/24 and 8/7, all of which are to end entertainment by 11 o'clock, which still falls within with entertainment license. These are just things that are outside out of the ordinary that the board had requested us to back.
Actually, Mr. McLaren, one second. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. McLaren. If you're not talking, can you please mute? We're getting a lot of racket, please. And Brian, I don't give, if you can give me the host key, what I'll do is I'll just, if I hear some noise, I'll just, just put the, okay, that's better. And I'm sorry, Donnie, just before you get going again, just before you get going again, just for the residents, so you have a particular, you have a particular license, an entertainment license, and we have a subset of requirements that if you have, go outside of the normal entertainment license, you have to come to the board for approval. So that's exactly what you're doing. So I'll let you, go ahead, why don't you proceed, but it was a little bit, it was tough to hear you, that's all.
Yeah, no, that is, that is correct. So this is for our DJ ladies night, movie night, luau, and dueling pianos. And all entertainment would be over by 11 o'clock, and obviously abides by all the, the same restrictions that we had with our original entertainment license, and with decibel levels and everything there. So, that's pretty much it.
Okay. So at this point, what I'd like to do is let's open up to the board for questions, for questions for Mr. McLaren. And then what we'll do is we'll pause, we'll open up for, to see if there's any abutters, then we'll just close the public hearing, we'll come back to the board. So why don't we start, how about Ms. Wellman, any questions, Mr. McLaren?
Jay, you don't have her muted, do you? I mistake.
I do not.
No.
She does have a red microphone though, let me see if I can click it, hold on, please hold. Okay, Jane?
Ah, there you go. My, thank you, sorry for that. My, I have like a spinny wheel and my computer was like, no, you can't comment now. It was, it did not want me to talk. So there you go. Thank you, and I apologize for that. I looked over all the, all the applications. Have you talked to your neighbors on these items? And, and are these what we've done in the past? It looks like they are, the standard items that you've, they've done in previous summers.
Yeah. These are items that we've done in the past and have been requested to come back in front of the town, no different than before. I have not specifically talked to them, but my understanding is obviously falling within the same guidelines as our original entertainment license. There should not be an issue as the issues have been sound and the time. So we are staying within that and staying within those, those rules.
And how's, how's business in this pandemic year?
Business is, it's tough. We've just got allowed to open up our bowling last week, a little bit this week. So obviously, we're trying to grasp at every different opportunity that we can get to, to try to bring people in here and continue to do what we do.
All right, well, thank you. I don't have any questions at this time, but I may, as we continue the conversation. Thank you very much, Mr. McLaren.
Thank you.
Okay, perfect. How about Ms. Stronach?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you for this. I do have a few questions. So I reviewed all this paperwork. Thank you so much for providing it. And in your license, the outdoor patio, some of these things are not, which is included in the original, the amplification can only be allowed with this special one day license. But this is actually, from my read of it, more than a one day. So ladies night is seven, what, is that a date? Is it the same day every week?
Yeah, essentially ladies night is, is every Thursday during the summertime.
And what's movie night? Is that, is that a specific?
Yeah, movie night, we can actually remove because we just don't feel that we're, we're set up correctly to, to do it regarding the COVID-19 pandemic going on. So we could, we could essentially, you know, remove movie night completely, if I'd like to.
Okay. That's your choice. I'm just trying to get a sense. Because what I'm saying is that this request was for a one day license, but the one days are, are what I would say specific to an event? Is that a good, is that an appropriate read of this application?
Yep. So it's a one day entertainment license for all of these specific one day events.
Okay. I will say that I am a little concerned with the residents not being spoken to. That, is that what I just heard you say, that you had not had an opportunity to discuss this with them yet?
No, this isn't something that has been really up for debate in the past. We're just staying within our restrictions with, which is what the, you know, that was a monumental entertainment license for us to get before because we were working at it for nine months. And then the board had requested that some of these one offs, which is what I'm putting in front of you right now, to come in for one, one, one shot to just go through all the, all of those dates on those special one offs. These are just things that we've done in the past. Pretty much what it is. I've had, I've had sound testing. I don't know if you want to try to get that person to move it.
No, you can continue, you can continue, I'm listening.
Yeah, so, so what I've done in the past, I've had, I've done sound testing with the neighbors, reached out to my abutters, my abutters' butters. I gave them all my business card to contact me if they've ever had issues. A lot of the issues were mentioned in prior meetings. And the biggest issue was really the level of the microphone and the time of day and the decibel in which they were being played. So.
Okay. And what night is the dueling pianos?
That is July 24th and August 7th.
No, what's the night, there's, I'm sorry, I'll get a calendar out. I should have done my homework a little bit better.
They'll both be on Friday nights.
Thank you, that's.
And again, everything is over by 11 o'clock. And upgrades that we had just made recently, since we've had an approval on our entertainment licenses, we've upgraded our sound system again, controlling even more outputs that we have for the entertainment purposes outside, you know, the speakers. So we can control the sound and dial it in. So there is no opportunity for the decibel levels to be raised above what it is currently by the backlog.
Well, that's great. And then just a couple more questions. The luau, I'm assuming that that's taken place of the ladies night because they're on the same date.
Correct. Yep, removed to the fire and the.
Yep, I see that. So I just have, so when you're saying that you're going to have some amplification system, the ladies night is just DJ? So it would be, there's no live bands in any of these, even though that you're asking for live music?
Yeah, I just figured that, you know, it seems like live music, so I don't want there to be any kind of gray area. I mean, dueling pianos, you can consider it live or not.
Okay.
They're all going to be tied into our controlled sound system. So it's not like, people get the wrong impression that having a DJ out there, they're on their own speakers. Our DJ will not be, they'll be on our speakers, and it's all controlled. So whether I have a DJ on the roof inside my building, outside, they're still tied into our sound system, the decibels are still controlled, there's no issues beyond. They'll be on, they'll be on the dueling pianos as well.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question, under the Board of Health, I see that there's sign off, and I guess this will be directed to Mr. Montori. It says must comply with COVID. I'm sure that like every business in town, you're well aware of what those are. But there's not a sign off. And I had asked the town manager to kind of be able to talk to that, just so that people know that we, and the businesses are taking this very seriously.
Yeah, absolutely. We take it very serious. And we've done a lot of the social distancing. We've laid out all the, we've got signage everywhere. We've laid out all of our tables to do so. So we're following the guidelines and even probably exceeding the guidelines at this point.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, in that particular instance, Amory, the Board of Health will inspect before every event to make sure that it is COVID compliant. So I would just ask if the board does approve this license, that they just add that each event is compliant with any guidelines from the state regarding COVID-19.
Thank you, Mr. Montori, that's helpful. That's all the questions I have for right now. I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. How about Mr. Kratman?
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman. All these events, I had the ability to get down and see them myself when they put them on last year. Seems like he's doing what we've requested him to do with the amplification and the noise. And I've seen the events, didn't seem like it was something that was other than, you know, just another event that they were running down there, and they're well maintained. So I have no concerns or questions.
Okay. Before I open it up to see if there's any abutters, to Mr. Kratman's point, Mr. McLaren, we asked you to come in front of us with a list, so we don't have to do the onesie twosies. I think you've done that, you demonstrated that. And for me, it's pretty simple. You know, we've been down this road before, it's all about the noise, that's all. So if you can, you know, stay within the levels of the noise and the hours, I think it's a very easy ask. I don't see why, you know, why we couldn't push these through. So that's all I had right now. At this time, why don't we open it up to the, to the director butters? So Brian, I'll refer to you. Do we have any abutters on the line?
We have a caller, Mr. Chairman.
Why don't we let that call it through, and again, just name and address for the record, please?
I'm calling in, I'm calling in for something further down the agenda.
Okay, okay, thank you, okay. So hold tight, okay. At this point, Brian, do we have any other callers, again, specific to the Wamisette one day entertainment applications?
We don't yet, Mr. Chairman, but there is a significant YouTube delay, probably around 45 seconds to a minute.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
While we wait for that delay, I know that Ms. Wellman just asked a little bit about the business, and they talked about the COVID regulations. I'd just be curious, how is all that impacting their business? It's very helpful to us to know how those things are going. I think the town's doing a pretty good job, and wondering if there's something else that we could do in that regard to help them. And it's a good opportunity for us to hear from businesses while we have Mr. McLaren on the line.
I appreciate you asking about it. I mean, it's been very, it's been very hard to, to kind of adjust with the guidelines being released in, you know, in short order. But we anticipated what we were going to do. And I've been part of a coalition of 17 entertainment complexes across Massachusetts. And we kind of devised a plan and spoke on multiple occasions, tried to put a best foot forward, and try to be as safe as possible. And, you know, we've talked to customers and families and see what they would like to, to move forward with, and what their comfort level is. The health department's been, been great, asking all the right questions. And, you know, we're trying to lead by example and really show people that we can be safe and, and we can be clean. It's something that we believe in very much, our core values. You know, keeping clean is one of our biggest ones. So we're overstaffed to overclean at this point, obviously with labor on the rise, and you know, the business isn't where it needs to be to support that. Fortunately, the government has helped us out and put us in a, in a better direction than we were originally when we shut down back in March, March 16th or 17th, I believe. It's been 100, we're shut down for about 109 days. So it was tough. But, you know, we're pulling through it and just hope that, you know, we can keep moving in a positive direction as everything starts to ease up. But we're doing everything in our power to maintain the social distance and with, with overkill on signage, and making people feel and look and see and, and understand that we're taking this very serious. We've got 142 staff, every single one of them got masks on, and they're taking it very serious. We had a, we had a whole special meeting for those guys. So business isn't where it needs to be. But obviously, events like this and opportunities to be able to do the specific events and entertainment helps us just that much more. So I appreciate you asking, though.
Great, thank you. If there are things related to this that we could find to support businesses, I know we're looking for those things. So I appreciate the feedback.
Thank you.
All right, good deal. How about Brian, one last call, one last call?
No callers, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. With that being said, I look for a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. So at this point, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the one day license presented to the board with the dates and times and the events that have been submitted to us in the package.
Okay. And just to Montori's point, Mr. Kratman, maybe just obviously following the state guidelines per COVID-19?
Yep, obviously, yep, please.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay, very good. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second, for discussion, just briefly, just to note, the amended license, during our discussion, Mr. McLaren noted that he did not want a movie night because he did not feel they were set up for that. So I think that that should be exempted from the application.
Mr. Kratman, you good with that?
That's actually in his license as part of it. So that's, if he actually wanted to, he could have that at any time. That's part of his license. That, he said he's not going to have it, but he has the ability. But in his, in his yearly license, he can have a movie night anytime during those hours if he decided to. It's not, I understand he's going to look for a one day license, but that was actually submitted in his entertainment license that was already approved.
I thought that was, I thought he was looking for an outdoor movie license, and I thought that was exempted. That's, that was my only understanding. I could be incorrect. I, I, either way, it's fine. It's already planned, and I'm not going to exempt it from that.
Yeah, Mr. McLaren can clarify, but I'm reading it right here in their entertainment licenses. Movie night, right, right in the thing.
Yeah, so we were, either way, if we want to keep it in there, makes no difference to us, we're, we're not going to have it. The only thing that I do ask is that, for whatever reason, from the application I submitted, one of the dates got deleted, which was 7/16, should be included on there for the ladies night.
Aha, because today's the 15th. Okay.
Okay. Well, I'll make a, I'll make amended motion to include the 7/16. Mr. McLaren could you just add that and send that into the town manager on a, on either an email or another letter to add that to your application?
Excuse me?
It was actually, it was actually on the application, it got removed from the town notice.
Yeah, I was just going to say, it's on the original application. I have both of them. So it's already on there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, then my motion.
7/16, 7/23, 7/30. It's for the July.
Yep.
All right. So we have a motion. We had a second for discussion. Ms. Wellman, anything else on your side?
No, no, sir.
Okay.
Good to go.
I have a motion and a second. So let's do a roll call vote. Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well. Thank you, Donnie, for coming in, and good luck, Donnie. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate you, Don.
Thank you, Donnie. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right. Next order of business, the Comcast poll petition for Tanglewood Avenue. Comcast poll petition for Tanglewood Avenue. This is a public hearing, so do I have a motion to waive the public reading of the hearing?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, roll call vote, Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Mr. Mark Kratman?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. Okay, do we have representation from the Comcast poll, from Comcast?
Is that Mr. Boucher?
I'm looking right now. Mr. Boucher, you unmuted. See if I can take him off.
David, you, David, you with us? Yeah, David Boucher. I'm not from Comcast.
Oh, sorry.
I'm from National Grid.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, it may be, Mr. Chairman, it may be caller user three.
All right.
Hello?
Call, caller user three, yes. Are you from Comcast?
Yes, Dave Prowell in Comcast.
All right, the floor is yours. Just want to explain what the, what your petition is, the Comcast poll petition for Tanglewood Avenue?
Yes. So again, Dave Prowell in Comcast, Tanglewood Avenue. We'd like to excavate the place, one solely owned Class IV 35 foot utility pole. The cable lines are currently crossing over the property of number 1748 Main Street, and the line is also tied to a pine tree. So we're looking to set this pole to clean that up and move that line back out into the right of way. And therefore, that property owner would be able to complete the removal of that tree. I guess at some point, that tree had been topped off, and he's probably been looking to remove the remainder of that pole. So this will, I'm sorry, the tree. So this will help clean that up, and he can take care of that tree.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any questions? Let's just open up to the board for questions. How about Ms. Wellman?
No, I reviewed the documentation thoroughly. So thank you very much. I have no questions.
Okay, very good. How about Ms. Stronach?
Same here, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the complete work.
Okay, how about Mr. Kratman?
I just have one question for the applicant. It's going to be moved out to Main Street on the corner there. Is it going to be in the back of, it seems like it's down by a plaza. Is there anything that's in the way down there? Or is there any signs, anything else that's on the corner of Tanglewood that it could cause, I mean, I'm just trying to think of what's out there in that location for, that could cause any problems out there?
No, there isn't. Prior to staking the location of the pole, I don't know if anyone went by and looked, but we had the location of the pole staked, and a dig safe was called in just to make sure that there wasn't any buried utilities there. So there's really nothing there that's going to prevent the installation of that pole.
So it will be placed in the back of the sidewalk area that's out there? Because I, I see, there's like a handicap ramp there. There's a grass area, and there's a street sign there. I'm looking at it right now on the Google Maps of the location. So will be placed in the back of the sidewalk area?
It'll be in the back, and more on Tanglewood than Main Street.
Okay, that's, that's one of my very things that pet peeves is sometimes these utility poles get relocated, and for some reason, they end up in the sidewalk area. And, you know, we have handicap accessibility, I want to keep that. So I want to make sure that they're not put into the sidewalk area, and they're definitely placed in the back location.
Yeah, the location of the pole is actually in the grass. There's no type of sidewalk there where, where we're proposing to put the pole. So any wheelchair ramps, et cetera, sidewalk would not be impacted.
Okay. And won't impact any site distance or anything. Okay. Well, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm good.
Okay, very good. I'm good as well. So this is a public hearing. So at this point, do we have any folks on the line for any questions as we got in the Comcast poll petition for Tanglewood Avenue?
We have no callers, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I just want to make sure we have the caller, we have one caller in line. I want to make sure that, that she's not, wants to talk about this. So I just unmuted. Caller one, are you, are you on the phone for this Comcast poll petition or not? Take silence as a no. Okay, so it looks like we have no abutters for this particular item. So at that, this point, I'd like to have a motion to, to close the public hearing.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion, do I have a second? Okay, roll call vote, Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. So what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the poll petition for the corner of Tanglewood and Main Street for this location, from Comcast, that's presented.
Okay, I have a motion, a second by Ms. Wellman, roll call vote. Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. All right, perfect. Thank you very much. Okay, our next order of business, we're actually going to jump to item four. Thank you very much. We're going to jump to item four, because I believe the item three, that was a National Grid New England joint pole for Main Street and Hillcrest Road that was taken off, because National Grid is going to work with the abutter. So at this point, what I'd like to do is move to item number four, and that's a National Grid Verizon New England joint pole petition. This one is from Shawshene and Vale Street. So do we have representation from National Grid and or Verizon on the phone?
Dave, hello, David Boucher, senior designer at National Grid, 1101 Turnpike Street in North Andover, here tonight to ask town of Tooksbury to place one new pole as shown on the diagram we've provided on Shawshene, Shawshene Street, excuse me, pole 159 and a half, dash 50. That will be right near our substation, which is, it's kind of like shown in the upper left of the drawing.
Um, that will be uh right near our substation, which is um, it's kinda like shown in the upper left of the, the drawing. Uh, we, we need to place a new device there and what the new device will do is monitor the feeder we got coming out of there um and enable us to restore power and do switching uh more efficiently to restore, uh to restore power and increase the reliability for um all the residents that are fed off of that. Um, it uh, and if the town of Tucksbury sees fit, it will, it will enable us to go forward and place that. The pole is also um, uh on the part of Shawshene Street that our high lines go over, our transmission lines. So um, there's pretty much no neighbors. There may be, um, there may be one across the street, the corner of Vale, but it's, they're not really very close. But if they, uh, I, I, I was the one that designed this and um, it is, I have not received any, just for your knowledge, I've not received anybody's phone calls uh that had any kind of questions. So if the town sees fit, it would enable us to go forward with placing that new pole.
Alright, thank you very much, David. Let me open up to the board to see if any questions or concerns. Ms. Wellman?
Hi, um, so I live on Shawshene Street, actually, um, about a mile and a half from this location uh toward the center. So I know, I know where it is. There's a number of, so I'm trying to kinda get a sense. I'm looking at the street view. Um, there's a pole on the corner and it has like all the wires that go across to Vale Street and all the wires that cross to Shawshene. Is this pole gonna be uh at that, the corner of that driveway? Is that into your facility there?
No. Uh, it's probably about a hundred feet from the driveway that goes up to our facility. And I believe it's, it's, it's across the street from Vale Street. It's on the far side where Vale comes off of Shawshene. Um, I don't know what you're looking at right now, but it is, um, it, I, before I decided that I wanted to petition the town for this, um, I, 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 I went and saw everything coming out in that area to try to fit that device on there in the existing plant. That's what we always try to do, use what we have.
Sure.
But we needed to have a pole close, close enough to the substation to do what we needed, what it's, what its function is. Um, there is a building in the back of there. There's a business on that side of the road that we also feed. It's right next to where the right of way is and uh the pole that's, that you're thinking of that feeds over to Vale Street.
Yeah.
It, it is quite busy, yeah. Uh, and I tried to see if I could put it there, but it, it's not possible, so.
Yeah, that's, I think, gotta be like one sixty-two, I think. Um.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not really sure. Um, alright, yeah, I know. I have no further questions. Um, I, I, as a resident of that street, we lose power from time to time. Um, at pretty frequently in the wintertime or big storms, so uh being able to restore power quickly and easily would be great. So I, I'm very excited.
Just to throw it in there, it, it's the newest technology uh where we can operate um certain things, not just in that spot, but you know, miles around from there uh by sending signals to our devices to make the switching done uh remotely and that enables us to get that power back on as quickly as possible. So it's just one more uh good thing that, that it does provide uh for, for everyone.
But it's an additional pole. You're not taking something out. It's more poles in that area. Okay.
Like I was, I, I tried to find a way where we could place it on existing poles, but um where we need to place it, it has to be really close to the subject. Really don't have too many choices. Uh, so.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that, Mr. Boucher.
Yep.
Alright, good deal. How about Ms. Tronik?
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman, and um I appreciate Ms. Wellman's point of view and explaining that perspective. Thank you.
Alright, good deal. How about Mr. Krabman?
Um, yeah, I, I just have a quick question. Uh, I'm looking at the locations and I do see quite a number of poles out here. Um, there is a, there is a sidewalk out there in this area uh that comes out of that um, uh commercial development. And once again, I'm looking at a pole in the middle of a sidewalk that's already existing. Um, and that's something that I'm just not happy about. The pole number, I'm looking at it right now and it's pole number one sixty. And uh, there's a handicap sidewalk out there and there's a pole sitting in the middle of an existing sidewalk. Why? You know, I understand we're talking about one pole, but there's another one that was also put out there and there's plenty of right of way out there. But yet, National Grid put one on the middle of a sidewalk out there.
Alright, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go on a limb here and say that the pole was there before the sidewalk was. A lot of times over the years, I mean, the, the poles have probably been there quite a long time. I don't know when the sidewalks went in. Maybe they've been there all along, uh but perhaps they were built around it after it was in place. Um, I don't know. But it is in a spot. I know, I know what you're saying. Uh, it's in a spot that's precocious and that you don't want it to be in if you have handicap ramps going in and out. Um, you always wanna have to leave that open too for the future if they're not now. Um, the place that I'm placing this new pole, um, I had planned on placing it uh in the sidewalk area. What I can do is move it sideways about three feet and it'll be off the existing sidewalk. It won't be in that. I believe it's a five or six foot wide sidewalk. So I can get it off of that uh easily enough and it won't go through the cement uh like the one that you're talking about, pole one sixty.
That, that would be
Yeah.
very helpful and uh we plan on, this is, this, this is one of the locations where we plan on installing sidewalks up the length of Shawshene in the near future and uh the town spending that kinda money to install sidewalks, the last thing I wanna do is have somebody getting so far up a sidewalk and run into a telephone pole. There's no need for it.
Yeah.
And while we're, while we're on the same subject, we also had a National Grid pole that was being installed last week and the National Grid pole went through a water line. Um, and I have no idea how that happened with dig safety. Uh, but is there a way that we can check into that to find out what happened with that location as well?
Um, sure. Um. So you have the exact location. I'm not the Tucksbury engineer. I can relay the message.
Okay, I thought, I thought you were, you would wanna cover Tucksbury, but there was one that was uh, we had a, we had a water main break last week and when I tried to find out what caused it, it turned out that National Grid was putting a pole and, and they put the pole through a water line. Uh, town manager may be able to give a little bit more information on that. I'm not sure if he was able to speak to our DPW or uh water department, but I had asked them to look into it. I don't know if he had found out anything on that.
We, we do have um, um representatives through all, all the towns, municipalities. Um, I don't know if you know who that is from National Grid, our, our liaison that we have. Uh, but if, if someone uh from the council knows, uh perhaps you can contact them. If not, what is the exact address? I'll try to relay that. I mean, uh, we can do two things.
We can get to, we can get to the information. I don't wanna delay the conversation on both this pole, but uh, like I said, when, when I see these poles going in, uh granted sidewalk could have gone in, but I, even with the sidewalk being installed, um, you know, these poles are supposed to be put back to if, even if there isn't a sidewalk there, it's supposed to be put back to a position that if a sidewalk will be installed, it should be put back at least, at least, you know, a five, six feet off the edge of line. So if the town decides to put something in there, the pole should always be set that far back off the right of way, the edge of line. So if we decide to put sidewalks in there, we don't have to relocate poles.
Yeah, um, just one, uh also a note for you, uh going forward, if you have this project going on, uh whoever is engineering it, if they need us to move any of the poles, let us know early. Uh, and if, if some of those poles need to move just for the sidewalks, you need to let us know and um we'll work with you on that. The engineer can work with you on that too. Um, I know that that, that would be a concern for you um putting in the sidewalks, but um, yeah, if you wanna give me an, an address on Main Street, I'll relay the message.
No, thank you. No, but it's, like I said, when these poles come into us, we wanna make sure that it's put on the furthest portion you could put back on the edge of the line, always on these poles. So this way, like I said, if there is some sort of improvement, they don't have to be relocated. So uh, but thank you for, if this pole can be moved, if this pole can be moved back so that in the future, if we decide to put a sidewalk in there, which we will be, um, we don't have to move it. And that's what I want National Grid to, Grid to keep in mind. So that if there are future improvements, to keep that in consideration, that the town is in, installing sidewalks all through our community. And so when we're putting in poles as improvements, keep that into consideration when designing and doing your engineering as well.
Oh, yeah, yep.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great, Doc. Great call out, Mr. Krabman. Alright, I have no questions. So why don't we open up at this point? Uh, do we have any abutters on the line for this particular pole petition? Again, this one is a Shawshene Street, uh Shawshene Street and Vow Street pole petition.
We have no callers, Mr. Chairman, but we still are about uh forty-five seconds behind.
Well, we, we did spend some time on this, so why don't we go ahead and, and close the public hearing? If we do have someone come in, you know, we can always um, we'll just throw it in reverse. But so do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Still moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call vote. Ms. Um, Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Ms. Tronik?
Aye.
Mr. Krabman?
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well. So what is the pleasure of the board? Mr. Krabman, I read the great call out here as far as um moving that back and then thank you, David, for, for doing that. So David, has this ever happened before where you go through a select board and they ask that make modifications? Would you typically come back to the board, make the modifications come back? Or how do you typically proceed in this case, David?
In a case like this, I mean, the, the, the measurement is exactly the same. All I'm, I'm making a, a move this way and the distance this way stays the same. So the, what I've already submitted, uh, um, I don't need to amend. It's just moving it to the side about three or four feet to stay off the sidewalk. Yeah.
Okay, so maybe we'll put that, well, I'll see what the pleasure of the board is, but I think it's important to note that, you know, let's put that as an amendment that's gonna push it back essentially off the sidewalk.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the National Grid and Verizon New England joint pole petition um as amended.
Could I have a motion?
I'll second that.
Have a motion or a second? Roll call vote. Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Ms. Tronik?
Aye.
Mr. Krabman?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. Alright, perfect. So David, I don't know if you're on the hook for the next one. Why don't we bounce right to the next one? This one's just another one, National Grid pole petition. This one is for Benson and Ponderosa Road. Um, are you also representing uh National Grid for this as well, David?
Yes, I am. Um, to give you the gist of this one, uh, there's a new home, uh, it's right near the town line. Um.
Uh, David, one second. I'm sorry, one, one second. Um, this is a public hearing, so do we have, do, do, do I have a motion to waive the reading? Public notice?
Still moved, Mr. Chairman. Second.
I have a motion. I have a motion and second. Roll call vote. Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Ms. Tronik?
Aye.
Mr. Krabman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. I'm sorry, David. Proceed.
Okay, um, on um, there's a new street named Ponderosa at the end of Benson Road uh right near the town line and um we don't have any electricity or any utilities down there. Uh, in order to bring the utilities to number fifteen, Ponderosa Road, uh, we're asking for us to place two new poles, six and six dash one, uh, brand new poles to uh extend our, our utility lines um, in order to serve, to get to that new home, um, to give them electricity. And if the town sees fit, it'll enable us to go forward with that project and place the two new poles as shown on the diagram we've provided.
Okay, let's open up to the board and again, though, we'll pause. We'll see if there's any um, any callers against the petition or otherwise and we'll go from there. So how about uh Ms. Wellman?
I'm just looking at it, um, and uh it looks like it's deep in South Tucksbury. Um, and when I was looking at it earlier today, Ponderosa's not on any of the maps yet that, that we have. Um, but I don't, I don't have any objection. Um, I don't think there's even any sidewalks in this area. So I think it'll be great. Thank you.
Okay, very good. How about Ms. Tronik?
Sorry, my mouse wasn't moving. I have no questions and uh I appreciate um the work and nothing.
Very good. How about Mr. Krabman?
Well, this one's straightforward. I'm fine with this one.
Alright, very good. And, and I have no questions or concerns at this point as well. So at this, let's pause. And um, Brian, do we have any callers for this National Grid pole petition? Again, Benson Road and Ponderosa Road.
We have no callers, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Still moved. Second.
Okay, I got a second by Wellman and first by Ms. Tronik. Okay, uh, roll call vote. Ms. Wellman? Ms. Tronik?
Aye.
Mr. Krabman?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. So at this point, what is the pleasure of the board for National Grid pole petition for Benson Road and Ponderosa Road?
Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the pole petition uh as submitted for Benson Road and Ponderosa Road by National Grid.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion, Mr. Krabman, second by Ms. Tronik. Roll call vote. Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Ms. Tronik?
Aye.
Mr. Krabman?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. Thank you much. David, I think your work is done this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Krabman. Um, if, if you did want to uh contact me with that information, you can, I, I believe it's a Brian uh from your, I'm not sure who, he was the one that sent me the, the link to get uh here tonight. Um, he, he has my email address. If you wanna just shoot me an email with that information, that'd be great.
Yeah. I mean, um, I had the town manager looking into exactly what happened with that. Um, and we will get the information over to you to see if they found out exactly what happened. It just, unusually when I do a, you know, a dig safe, that doesn't happen, so something went wrong, but I would like to find out if it could be resolved.
Let me know if you need any help. That.
Thank, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mr. Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much, David. Okay. Okay, at this point, let's move into um, to residents. Now, I know we have someone on the line. Let's open. I'm gonna unmute the resident. Let's see if it's a general comment or something else. So do we have a call in user? Brian, it looks like we have one.
Sorry about that. We have, we have no uh, no, no call-ins, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, looks like we still have like a call in line.
Oh, sorry about that. So the call in line is the second computer that I'm running for the uh participants. So the participants will show up on the call in line using the uh seven seven one zero eight one nine number.
Okay. Alright, good deal. So why don't we do this like we always do? Because it's technology, if residents happen to do call down a new business, that's fine. We'll absolutely entertain any residents calling like we always do. So uh, at this point, let's jump down to new business. Uh, we already took care of item number six, item number seven, the termination and release of easement three ninety-five Woburn Street. And just for the board, I just believe this is housekeeping. This was just voted approved at town meeting. So um, the town engineer, Kevin Hardeman, got the paperwork in and essentially this is just um a formality at this point. So I don't, if there's any questions from the board about termination and release of the easement three ninety-five Woburn Street at this time. Seeing that, what's the pleasure of the board?
I have a motion to approve the release of easement three ninety-five Woburn Street as submitted from the town.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Krabman. Ms. Tronik, okay, roll call vote. Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Ms. Tronik?
Aye.
Mr. Krabman?
Aye.
Okay, the chair votes aye as well. Um, next item of business is a zoning bylaw committee reappointments. Uh, I think this one's another pretty, pretty easy one here. All of the members, keep me honest here, Mr. Krabman, cuz I know you're a part of the uh, that committee, but all the members essentially are looking to be reappointed. That's all.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any uh questions from the board?
Uh, no, but I would like to, uh, I'd just like to acknowledge their significant amount of work. Their body of work has been tremendous and they're continuing on um so we can bring this further with clarity and I appreciate Mr. Krabman's uh dedication and service on this board.
A hundred percent, Ms. Wellman. Great, well said. And it was, I mean, even not to present this in town meeting because of the situation and that was pretty big of this committee. I know they put a lot of work in, so that was, that was big of the committee. So, so with that being said, what's the pleasure of the board for the zoning bylaw committee reappointments?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the reappointment of the members as listed in our packet to the uh zoning bylaw committee.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion, I second. Roll call vote. Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Ms. Tronik?
Aye.
Mr. Krabman? Uh, chair votes aye as well. Okay, thank you very much. For this next one here, boards and committee, really, we don't have, um, I do not believe, let me just look quickly that we, what I'd like to do is maybe table this. Uh, and we're gonna see which gaps we have in the particular committees and we potentially have to do some interviews. I'll tell you, um, thanks to the residents and obviously volunteering for these committees, we're in pretty good shape with these committees as a, as a whole. So I don't think there's any more business um that we need to take up as far as boards and committees this evening unless um the board keep me honest, but I think we're in good shape.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this might come up for a future agenda item, uh, but since we're Uh, but since we're talking about boards and committees, if you'll entertain my, my commentary for one second. I'm curious if the board will, um, entertain discussion to create a bylaw committee to look at general bylaws. Sort of a standing committee, not to revamp all of the bylaws, like the zoning has to be done because it's so interdependent, the code, the way that it's written. But to take up bylaws over time, um, that need updating. Some of our bylaws are, are quite a bit old and need to be refreshed, um, if you will. And, uh, so I think that it would be useful to come forward with that. I know that, uh, the manager has, uh, drafted some language around creating that. So if we could put that on the August agenda, I think that would be really good. Um.
Be careful. Yep.
Be careful what you.
Agreed. And be careful, be careful for what you wish for, Ms. Wellman, because I think you'd be a very good fit on that committee. But, uh, we've been talking about.
Yeah, I'm volunteering to, to work on that. I, I don't think it's, I'm not looking for something that's a, a general change to things, but just to kind of make some steady forward progress on things that need to be changed. That's going to help the staff do the work that they need to do and help us do our work more efficiently. Um, so I think if we put that on for a future agenda item and open that up, that would be good. And then, um, finally, and again, this would also be for future agenda item, but because we're talking about boards now, I'd like for the, um, the Board of Selectmen to consider creating a Human Rights Commission. Um, many municipalities have them. Many in Massachusetts have had them since the seventies. We don't have one in Tewksbury, um, to work on. And now that we have a new police chief, it's a, it's a really good, it's an ideal time to, uh, look at creating something like that. So we should talk about it and see how we want to structure it and see if the board wants to entertain something like that. But I think that, um, with the, um, with the discussion that we're seeing in Massachusetts and across the country and with the, um, the timing that we have with our new police chief, um, and lots of stuff going on, it would be a good time to start looking at that.
Very good. Yeah, we'll continue the conversation on August eleventh. So sold for two agenda items. Thank you, Ms. Wellman.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, very good. And, and that's going to, that's going to bring us down to Mr. Montour in the town manager section.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, I have a few things. First, if I may, I just wanted to, um, just give an update on the close of the fiscal year, uh, two thousand twenty and the, um, beginning of fiscal year two thousand twenty-one. As all of you know, fiscal twenty closed on June thirtieth. We have about a fourteen-day period in which we can, um, get any, um, last-minute invoices paid from the previous fiscal year as well as encumber any funds, uh, by departments for bills that they will not receive by July fifteenth, but will receive at some point in the near future to be paid. Today was the last day to do all of that. And, uh, as we have for the last, uh, at least ten years or more, uh, the books, uh, or the fiscal year closed with no major issues. I anticipate, um, the overall books to be closed over the next, um, several weeks. Audit, our audit firm will be coming in, uh, within the next week to conduct the FY twenty, uh, audit. We hope to have our free cash, uh, sent to the, to the Department of Revenue for certification sometime in August. Uh, so things are progressing, uh, well in regard to the close of fiscal twenty. Now, I don't anticipate any, um, issues with our revenue. Uh, we will see, um, our revenue projections overall exceed our projections. Um, there were a few areas that, uh, we, uh, did fall short. Our, uh, hotel motel tax, uh, revenue, uh, will, uh, be less than, uh, we projected. Somewhere between fifty and seventy-five thousand dollars less. Interesting enough, interestingly enough, our meals tax, uh, came in higher than our, um, projection, or at least the numbers that I've been looking at so far. I'd like to qualify that by saying the books haven't been fully closed. But our meals tax, uh, did come in higher than projected. That's not because we had a great last quarter. That's just because of the projection that we brought forward is not, um, overly optimistic. So that helped. So I think our revenues, uh, for FY twenty closed in a positive note. Uh, we will have a higher receivable for our tax collections than we did last year because of COVID nineteen. Not as many people, uh, were able to pay their tax bills, uh, for the fiscal year. Uh, so we're most likely going to see a higher, uh, receivable in that area. Our motor vehicle excise tax will exceed our, um, our revenue projection for FY twenty. Although the, um, uh, fiscal year twenty, uh, collections for that very specific motor vehicle excise tax, tax collection year, um, was less than last year by, uh, two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, but I think that is mainly because, um, the registry of motor vehicles changed over their software this year. And there may be a lag in the commitments that needed to go out for, for, uh, two thousand twenty. Uh, so we may see that help us in, uh, in fiscal year two thousand twenty-one. Uh, but overall, the, uh, collections and the, uh, revenue for motor vehicle tax will exceed our projections. So I think the year for FY twenty, um, we, we should be, uh, in a good.
Lost you, Richard.
FY twenty-one, uh, we will, uh, continue our spending freeze, uh, for department budgets. The departments are only allowed to spend on essential services. Purchases, uh, with the exception of police cruises. Um, we, um, are really ensuring that only essential, uh, spending will take place in the first few months of the fiscal year until we have a better idea of what, uh, revenues will look like for FY twenty-one. Uh, I've done an initial review on the local level. And, um, it appears at the moment that we'll need to reduce our revenue projections for FY twenty-one by approximately nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. Most of that coming in the area of meals tax and hotel motel tax. We'll see a reduction in those, in both of those areas somewhere in the range of fifty percent. And I'm basing that on, uh, a review of the fourth quarter revenues that we saw for both of the, in both of those areas, as well as just discussion with, um, specific discussions with people in the hotel motel, um, industry and what they believe they'll see over the next year, uh, if we have a vaccine or if we don't have a vaccine for COVID nineteen. So the only piece that we're really waiting for, uh, two pieces that we're waiting for regarding FY twenty-one revenue will be our new growth, uh, which I hope to, uh, have a number sometime in August, as well as what the state plans to do with our FY twenty-one, uh, state aid. Uh, we have heard nothing, uh, in regard to, uh, what reductions may occur in that area. And once we, uh, understand that better, we'll be able to make our adjustments, uh, within the, uh, the, uh, operating budget, as well as utilize any of our reserves to help get through FY twenty-one. The plan, uh, would be, uh, depending on the, the amount that needs to be reduced, we would eliminate, uh, any, uh, items within the budget regarding capital that would specifically, uh, have to do with capital outlay budgets. Uh, we have funding within, uh, debt service for a new DPW facility that, uh, we would put on hold. Uh, the schools would put on hold any of their capital outlay spending. And those items would get us close to two million dollars, uh, within the budget, uh, that we could, um, reduce to help us offset any reductions in both local receipts and state revenue. And then anything beyond that, uh, we would go to the stabilization fund or whatever number we have for free cash certified in August to, uh, help us. So that's where we stand right now with the budget. I know that's a lot to absorb, but, um, the good news is the FY twenty budget closed. And, um, we have a plan to adjust if there's any reductions, uh, when we, uh, adjust for reductions in the FY twenty-one budget. Uh, on one last note, uh, in the, at the end of the FY twenty-one, uh, budget, uh, we did not receive a full chapter seventy allotment from the Commonwealth. But they will, uh, provide the full funding over the next few days. Uh, there was a glitch within their system that caused us not to get, uh, a full allotment for June. Other towns, not all, but other towns did have a similar problem. Uh, but we were in touch with the Department of Revenue as, as late as today. And they said we will get a full allotment. That's it on that item. Any questions?
Thanks for the insight. Uh, I'm, I'm good. Any questions from the board? We got on the budget?
I have a few.
Okay.
Please.
Um, okay, thank you. Uh, so I, I was curious, um, how many unfilled positions we have right now? You, you mentioned your spending freeze. How many open positions, um, do we have right now, if any?
Um, we have, I'm not sure about the school, but on the town side, we have, um, a maintenance position. Uh, we have, um, an outreach position at the Council on Aging. We obviously have the, uh, director's position at the Council on Aging. And, um, I believe, um, just going through my mind, I believe that's all we have. That's all we have at the moment.
And you hadn't created any new positions from what I understand. Correct?
No, we have no new positions. And the only positions that we'll look at filling, uh, would be any police and fire personnel.
Are, are what's, are you going to fill the, the Council on Aging position or are you waiting on? Yeah, okay.
So, so the plan would be to fill the council, the Council on Aging Director's position. And once that position is filled, um, the director, um, the new director will decide how the office would be restructured. We do want to fill the outreach position because of the need, especially during this time of the pandemic. Uh, the need to have outreach in place of the seniors is important. Now, how we approach, uh, any other positions that may be, um, open at that time, depending on the director's position, how it's filled, that's something we would discuss with the new director.
Okay. Um, and then thank you for the information on the chapter seventy payment for FY twenty. That's good news. And the information on the, um, projections for local receipts dropping, um, that's, that's insightful. It's good to have that now and be able to prepare for that. It's, it's not disaster level yet based on our reserves. I think, uh, we can manage some of that. It would be disappointing to put some of our capital projects on hold. Let's wait and see where this starts, where this goes. Um, I did reach out to Senator Feingold today to ask him to support the additional bonding on the transportation bond bill. It's going to raise, um, the, the chapter ninety funds from two hundred million to three hundred million, uh, back to towns. And so that doesn't come out of other pockets that is bonded out. So, um, I think that would be really good. So I don't know if, if the rest of the board wants to reach out to Senator Feingold on that, but they're debating that tomorrow. Um, and that's a, that's a big one for cities and towns, and, and we certainly can use the extra transportation funding here. Um, thank you. I appreciate your comp, your complete, um, report. And, um, and I will be following this as we go. Thank you very much.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman.
Please.
Um, I too appreciate that update, Richard, uh, very thoughtful. Um, love the proactive approach to all of those things. And, um, while we may not, um, be impacted this year other than the projects, there is the possibility, and I'm asking, I'm not trying to be doom and gloom, but, um, there is the possibility of this hitting us later on down the road. Um, as we listen to financial forecasters, they're basically saying, um, that this is, uh, unusual because it is, uh, going to be a, a holded recession. I think I heard someone called it where, you know, the impacts of this might not be, um, dramatic, but may come up. And as someone who has sat on the board and had to, um, live through some really difficult times, I just want to thank you and your team's work and the efforts that your department heads are making now and the sacrifices that they're putting forward that you just discussed, um, are much appreciated as along with their hard work. Because I know, um, that with COVID, all of us are experiencing more work instead of less. And I just, if you could extend my gratitude to them and, um, thank them for their hard work, I would appreciate that.
Yeah, I, I will do that. Thank you very much. If I may, Mr. Chairman, um, Selectman Stronach, um, just brought up a, a good point about, um, what may be coming down the road. I think, um, going back to what, uh, Selectman Wellman said about using our reserves and having a plan to get through FY twenty-one, I think our biggest challenge probably is most likely going to be in FY twenty-two. Uh, because, um, that's when a lot of these, uh, additional costs will probably, uh, hit us. Um, we had a finance committee meeting last night. We had a discussion on, uh, a lot of contract services that we have, whether they're in the schools, whether they're in the town. Things like solid waste disposal, uh, we know is going to have a major increase. Other contracted services such as transportation, um, all of those costs most likely are going to see, uh, an increase and impact us in FY twenty-two because of the way the economy is, um, impacting those industries, not just now, but over the next fiscal year. So, um, I think we'll get through FY twenty-one, um, with some, uh, some good planning. But FY twenty-two is the one that's really going to be the year that we're going to have to, um, um, we'll probably see a lot of this, uh, this impact affect the town services.
Cool. How about Mr. Krabman?
I have no comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, Mr. Montour, floor still yours.
Um, just a quick update on the dispatch center, um, the regional communication facility on Whitwell Road. Uh, the facility, uh, is complete. It's, it's probably ninety-eight percent complete. It's not, um, fully signed off on. There's still some punch list items we're getting the contractor to finish. But we're, um, you know, we could open operationally today if need be. We were going to open up on July one, but what stopped us, uh, was not the fact that the building wasn't ready. It was, uh, because we did not have enough, um, dispatches on staff to, um, to operate, um, properly to provide service to both, uh, Drake and Tewksbury. Uh, we're about three and a half dispatches short right now. Um, there was a delay, uh, or a problem in hiring, um, um, dispatchers that had the proper training. Uh, and then when we looked to hire dispatchers that we would train on our own, uh, there was a problem during the pandemic when training was shut down by State nine-one-one, so we couldn't bring in anyone, uh, to be trained. Uh, that has changed, so, um, we have, um, interviewed people that, uh, we are comfortable with bringing on and having them trained. And we actually were fortunate enough to have a couple of dispatchers from other communities now show interest in coming over to the regional, uh, center, uh, and that will help us. So the plan right now is to open for, um, September first. All the equipment is in, uh, with the exception of some, um, equipment from State nine-one-one. The building, um, hopefully over the next few weeks, I can get people in for a tour of the building. But, um, the only thing holding us up right now is just to get the proper staffing in place to, uh, operate the center. The town of Drake, uh, does have, um, some problems, um, of their own, uh, not being able to fill dispatch positions within the town. It's one of the more difficult positions, uh, cities and towns are finding, uh, to, um, to replace. They, uh, may, they will need some help in dispatching their nine-one-one calls. Uh, so we are talking to them about doing that for them, uh, in the interim until the center is up and running. But other than that, uh, the building is complete. We are in a good position right now after. We are in a good position right now after interviews that we've done over the last few days, and the possibility of getting some trained dispatchers on board to be ready to open fully on September 1. That's it.
No questions here. Perfect.
And then, moving along to an update on the playing fields of the last few weeks, the playing fields, the fields in town have been open to the public for a variety of recreation purposes. Over the last couple of weeks, with the news, the most recent phase of reopening by the governor, youth sports that were allowed to start practicing, were allowed to play games, that started happening last week. Youth sports are not allowed to have tournaments. They are allowed just to have games on the fields. Our fields are very active. Youth sports are using the baseball fields. The basketball courts and tennis courts are being utilized heavily. Playground is open and obviously being used. The sprinkler park is also open and being used, so the fields are open. They're being maintained by facilities, grounds crew. For those of you who don't know, we have two people that are full time maintaining both Livingston and Nebraska Field, as well as our monuments, memorials throughout the town and the Town Common and other grounds. And things seem to be going well. People have pointed out some issues that need to be addressed within our fields. Selectman Krabman has been helpful in pointing out and advising us some areas that need to be addressed that I believe we've addressed. We're working closely with youth groups to ensure that all of their needs have been met. For the most part, there have been no major issues. There has been a parking issue down at the, down at Livingston, because it's being used so heavily that we're trying to address. But overall, things are going well with our town fields.
Any questions for Mr. Montori around the update? I said, I know Mr. Krabman's been doing a lot of work with Mr. Montori.
So I just would like to say that I was actually at the fields this weekend, and I was impressed at how people were using the sprinkler park and the playground, and how parents were allowing for the social distancing in those things with their kids. So I want to thank our residents for paying attention to that, so that we can remain open and families can be full. Every time I go down there, it is so beautiful down there. I just am grateful for that space and just want to thank people for taking care to do that, so that we can continue to allow to use of that whole area. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Please.
Mr. Montori, are we renting the fields out to any groups that aren't part of like the youth, the youth activity groups, youth sports groups, that kind of thing? Are we holding off on that?
I would have to double check if we are. We may have one or two adult leagues utilizing the soccer fields, but there may be a U-type team using it for practice, but nothing major.
No, that makes sense to me, though.
We've been trying to really limit, especially the summer, to the youth groups, and they always have preference anyways.
Right.
Might be just an in-town, an adult league. That's what we had.
Sure. That's, yeah, in-town makes sense, yeah. That's why, I'm just wondering if there's usage sort of outside of town. We do that sometimes, but I know we're trying to prioritize it, too. That was my only question. Thank you.
Mr. Krabman?
I have no comments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Montori, just super quick. I mean, if you drive by any time of the day, that place, Livingston, is packed from end to end. It's crazy. It's wonderful to see. Mr. Montori, how about, I know we approved the town meeting resurfacing of some of the courts there. Any idea what's your thought process there? Because the courts, like I said, they're packed, so it's like, you know, down if you do, down if you don't. Do we wait? Do we not wait? Any thought on that yet?
Yes, so Vinny Bollmull and myself spoke about this last week. He has a contractor and a price already to go to resurface the basketball courts and the tennis courts. And the plan was to start them at the end of July, alternating one court in each, so one court would still be available to play. He may rethink that and push the resurfacing off to the fall because of the usage down there has been so high. He's not sure if he wants to take any courts away from anyone at the moment. He thinks the fall may be better because the usage would be less, but I'm going to talk to him next week when he gets back from vacation, and we'll make a judgment call on what we think the best approach is. We just don't, right now, with the outdoor spaces being utilized so heavily because of the pandemic and what are a few things people do, especially for exercise, we don't want to hinder that at the moment. So we'll decide over the next week the approach we want to take. But we're ready to go either way.
Excellent. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I think that's it as far as the updates for the fields, Mr. Montori. Very good.
Thank you. The next item is an update to the energy aggregation plan that the town has. As the board knows, the last five years since October 2015, we had an energy aggregation plan approved by the Department of Utilities. Being involved in an energy aggregation plan was approved at town meeting and also approved by the board of selectmen. Essentially, energy aggregation allows the town to procure electric rate for residents to take part in that is competitive with the basic rate for national grid. It's not just for residents, but for commercial industrial properties also. And a resident has the opportunity to opt out of the energy aggregation rate and stay with national grid if they choose, depending on how the rates are, how the rates compare to each other. That plan, as I mentioned, was approved and adopted in 2015. It should be adopted every, updated every five years. We're at that point that we would like to submit an updated plan to the Department of Public Utilities. And the updated plan, the only change that would occur in the plan would be to add an option for residents to opt in to take a rate that's higher than the aggregation rate, but the rate is a green rate, allowing residents to take advantage of a green, green energy type rate if they choose. Again, it's solely an opt-in rate for the resident to choose, but in order to do that, we need to update our plan to include that. Just a quick note on our energy aggregation program and plan that we've had in place in Calendee in 19. We saved both residents and commercial businesses approximately $944,000 in savings of our rate, our aggregation rate compared to national grid's basic rate. And just in the first quarter of calendar year 2020, we have saved $506,000 for commercial and, commercially in residence, in our rate compared to national grid's rate. So as you can see, it's been a successful program, and this is just another option for residents to take advantage of if they want to enter into, take advantage of a renewable energy rate. That's it.
All right, I think we're good, Mr. Montori. No questions? You have a few agenda items left on, for the town manager section?
Yes. The, it's that time of year, believe it or not, that we need to schedule the date for a special town meeting annually. And historically, the town has had a special town meeting, the first Tuesday in October. And I would ask the board if they would set the date, set the date of October 6 at 7:00 PM at the Tewksbury Memorial High School for a special town meeting.
So moved. But I would just like to say, didn't we just finish this?
I sometimes wonder, yeah, second for discussion.
Please.
I sometimes wonder if our special town meeting isn't too early in the fall, because there's just not a lot of runway to get stuff done. And I think it pushes a lot of pressure on staff in September. I don't know what your thoughts are, but it's maybe worth a change down the road.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I don't disagree with that. I've been just going by the history of what's happened in the community, but it doesn't give us a lot of time to get ready for, from the time annual ends to the time we need to, you know, stop thinking of a special, getting the books closed, getting free cash certified, making decisions based on things like that. Something to think about down the road. I think this town meeting, we're going to keep very small, so we should be okay. But down the road, I don't disagree. It might be something to change.
Yeah. Remand that to the bylaw committee. Just to you, okay. All right, so yeah, but I second October 6.
Okay, October 6 at 7:00 PM. All right, roll call vote. Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Mr. Krabman?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye as well.
The next is, Mr. Chairman, is to open the town meeting warrant for special town meeting, and I would ask the board to open the warrant, for warrant starting tomorrow, July 16, and closing the warrant on August 14 at 4:30 PM.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second for discussion. Can we push that date further? Our next meeting is August 11. So if the board has, I mean, they want me want to put on, it's going to be hard to manage that in three days.
Sure. How about the 21st? It's fine. Is that okay?
So I'll amend my motion to the 21st.
Second. Thank you very much.
Motion, a second? No, very good. Good call. Okay, roll call vote. Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach? I saw an aye. I did see an aye. All right, cool. Mr. Krabman? And Chair votes aye as well. All right, Mr. Montori, almost there.
Yep. Can I just go back on the energy aggregation plan? If the board was okay with that change, could they vote to make the update to the plan, and then I could advertise that it's available for public comment?
So moved, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, second.
Motion by Ms. Wellman, second by Ms. Stronach. Okay, roll call vote. Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Mr. Krabman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. So you're good to go there, Mr. Montori?
I'm good to go there. We'll advertise that it's available for public comment. If we don't receive any comments, we'll submit it to the Department of Public Utilities. If we have any comments, I'll bring the plan back to the board.
And Ms. Montori, just, I know in futures, after you do all that, does the energy folks come into us, and then we also have to make a vote? I recall those in previous meetings, previous years, that they would come in and we'd have to vote on, to adopt that.
I'm not sure they will in regard to this update, because it's pretty simple, but it wouldn't be the worst thing to have them come in in the fall and give the board just a general update on how things have gone in the energy aggregation plan.
Okay, yeah, I mean, those were some big numbers, so, okay. So we'll follow your lead there, Mr. Montori. Very good.
And then, a couple more things. Town council invoice from May 16 through May 31 in the amount of $2,295, I would recommend approval.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. Second.
I have a motion, a second. Roll call vote, Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Mr. Krabman? Chair votes aye as well.
Also, a town council invoice from June 1 to June 30 of 2020 in the amount of $4,080, I would recommend approval.
So moved.
Motion.
Second.
And I have a second. Thank you, Ms. Stronach. Roll call vote, Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
And Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
And Mr. Krabman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Anything else, Mr. Montori?
Just a quick thing, Mr. Chairman. We opened bids for the Center Fire Station project last Wednesday, and we just wanted to inform the board that the low bid that we received, and we're finalizing D-CAM qualification, certification before we award, the low bid was approximately $800 to $1 million, under our 95% estimate for the project, so that was good news.
That's great.
So we hope to have a contract and a formal notice of award over the next couple of days. We do have one subbid protest that we're working through that's nothing major, but we plan to have a contract and everything finalized within the next week, so the contract can mobilize and get going before mid-August.
And last but not least, thank you, Mr. Montori, for all the updates, solid updates per usual. And I probably should have brought this up, a new business, but I think in our next meeting for, set for August 11, Mr. Montori, a lot of residents have been asking about water bans. We see our neighboring communities and towns and cities have water bans. So I don't know if you can just touch upon it, but I know we're going to just consider putting some guidelines together, but just for the residents, that we will be kind of sharing, let's call it, the state of our affairs as far as our overall water usage and whatnot on our next meeting. But anything to share for this particular meeting, Mr. Montori?
Sure. And I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. So it has been, we have had issues in town regarding brown water. And that is because in the month of June, we had historically high usage of water. We used, the town used 117 million gallons of water in the month of June, whereas last year, I believe, we're somewhere 74 million gallons of water. Because of that high water usage, that stirred up sediments within the system, causing certain parts of town to have brown water. And the areas that have brown water are areas of town that had cast iron pipe. So that's been the problem in regard to the brown water. We also have, because of the high usage, we have been discussing internally about implementing a voluntary water ban. Other towns have had mandatory water bans in place because of the drought that we're having, a solid water supply coming from the Meramec and where we pull our water from. But even though we have that sufficient water supply, it doesn't mean we should be, should not be thinking of water conservation measures, not from an environmental standpoint. So between now and August 11, I'll get more information for the board, and we'll be able to give you a report on what can be done, or what we're thinking of doing, or what things we may have done in the interim.
All right, perfect. Thanks again, solid updates. Okay, perfect. All right, at this point, I do believe we have some minutes to approve.
Jane, you're on mute.
I saw that. Thank you. Melissa prepared these. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of April 21, 2020, and May 5, 2020. Would you pick them together?
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion, a second. Roll call vote, Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Mr. Krabman?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. Okay, thank you very much. I think we're good to go there. So why don't we jump into board member reports? And why don't we start with, how about Mr. Krabman? Any updates for the board? Any, any updates for the board?
I'll have reports at our next meeting. We haven't met other than the LRTA at the end of the month. But I'll have a more, a better update at our next meeting.
Okay, perfect. How about Ms. Stronach?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The building committee for the new school met last Thursday, similar to the fire. We did get bids that were lower than expected. So currently, we are under budget in that project as well. And I can tell you that they have definitely begun work. They start work at 7 o'clock in the morning. And there's lots of activity on that property that's happening. It's very exciting to see. Continue to keep you all updated on that, but moving very fast and furiously on that project. So I'm happy to have that going on. Local housing and events have not met in this month as there was no business to discuss. And I just would like to say that I was in town hall and I was very impressed by all the social distancing pieces that have been put into play with the barriers. And it really looked great. So I know that our hope is to get open to the public so that we can better serve our community. And I just want to appreciate all that work that's being done on, in that piece. Also like to mention that the superintendent is working on a return to school committee and has asked for input from our department heads. I really am appreciative of us being included in that, in the forefront of that work. I wish them best of luck trying to figure out what the next steps are to that because it is time to get our students back to school. But how to do that safely is going to be a difficult balance. So I wish them well with that work. And then I guess my other questions were about the energy aggregate thing, which I'm very excited about. I think that's a great program for our residents. I would encourage people who are not familiar with that to make themselves familiar. And then I appreciate the budget updates. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, very good. Thank you. How about Ms. Wellman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to let you know that the beautification committee doesn't have a meeting scheduled right now. They're thinking sometime in August. It hasn't been determined yet. NIMCOG's meeting again in August as well. They don't have a July meeting. So I haven't been that busy with these things, probably why I'm trying to do the general bylaw committee. So and then those were my other two items was the Human Rights Commission and the bylaw committee that I wanted to talk about. So thank you very much.
Awesome. Good stuff. I don't have much on my end too. As far as the reuse committee for the Trahan and for the North, we're going to start kicking, firing that committee back up. Just for a sneak peek, what we're trying to do is going to bring in a consultant to help us look at both properties, not only the buildings on both properties, but also the land. And that's going to be our big step to move forward. And hopefully with the help of the consultant, we'll have a number of options that we can share with the community and bring everyone in and ultimately take a vote down the road at town hall, but a downtown meeting. But that's, that's way down the road. So that's really all I had. So at this point, anything else before we close?
No.
All right. I'll look for a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Final roll call vote tonight, final roll call vote. How about Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Mr. Mark Krabman? Mr. Mark Krabman? Uh-oh.
Hello? So moved.
You voted aye, correct, Mark?
Yes, I do.
Chair votes aye as well. You're good. You're good. All right. Chair votes aye as well. Thank you very much. Great meeting. Thank you, guys.